Bring the meeting and the case made first, and then we'll call it.
Sir, person west.
Here.
Commissioner Bowman.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia is excused. Commissioner Ferry.
Here.
Commissioner Hollins.
Here.
Commissioner Solia.
Here.
You have a form.
Thank you. Would you all rise and follow me in pledge to our nation's pride? I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Whoops. Item one, approval of minutes, consideration of minutes for approval, consideration for March 21st, 2019, and April 18th, 2019, regular meeting minutes for approval as written or with noted corrections. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? If so, are there any corrections or omissions?
I see no corrections in the March 21st or April 18th, and I make a motion that we approve of.
Motion is made, it's seconded.
Okay.
Motion is made and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Motion carried. Item two, consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the Clean City Commission need not request permission in advance of action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to the direction, directing staff to study the matter or reschedule the matter for consideration and discussion at a later time. Is there anyone that wants to address the Clean City Commission this evening? If there's no one who wants to address it, we'll close the consideration of public comments. Item three, reports. Chuck Gibson Community College Awards. Clean City Commission will present Surbat Gardens Club, Kathy Norwick's Garden, Kingman Middle School Class, and Girl Scout Troop 2074 with project awards. Do we have those awards? Okay. Is Kathy Norwick here? Is Surbat Gardens? Item B, Waste Expo 2019, report from Commissioner Ferry and Commissioner Hollins regarding the attendance of the annual Waste Expo Convention on May 8th, 2019. Commissioner Ferry, would you like to go first?
Um, sure, thank you. Uh, so, we, first of all, the Waste Expo was very neat, I really enjoyed it. Um, we, we kind of split up and tried to hit as many classes as we thought with the workshops, work sessions that we thought would be, um, appropriate for Kingman. And, um, I did more of the composting, uh, and food rescue kind of classes, and I was really interested in the composting because we all know how difficult it is to recycle at this time, especially being a rural community. And I think that there is a lot of potential in our community to, um, do more composting. I think that since we, uh, pay a lot of money to dispose of our trash, um, it, it could be an alternative to, uh, you know, some of the tipping fees. Maybe that might be a direction that we can study or look into a little bit more. Um, but they were really stressed not going into it real quickly, and if you do it, um, it's probably good to do, uh, kind of a sustainability education class that teaches people to compost, um, in their own backyards, and then, and then when you go citywide, they have a little bit more knowledge because they're dealing with a lot of the same contamination with a composting problem that, that we're dealing with recycling. Um, and then they also said, you know, maybe start with non-food things, um, like paper and those kind of things. Um, so it was just really fascinating, and I think it could be something that we can continue to research and look into in the future. Um, but that was, that was my experience, and that, that was really what, what my focus was there, so.
Alright. I had a couple of different ones. One of them being the waste conversion technologies, which had to do with gasification and, uh, the bio solids and stuff, converting to, to energy and stuff like that. Uh, don't sound like we was ready for that yet, but, uh, something we should be looking at, uh, in the future, because we need to get into the, the right century here and get going with this. A lot of California people was there for that, and for there was a lot of more innovation and stuff like that. Uh, of course, they're making their laws and stuff like that, so they're way ahead of us on that, and biochar and stuff like that, to reduce the quantity of your, your waste.
What is biochar?
Partially burnt, would kind, kind of like making charcoal in that direction.
Did they get into, uh, incineration, uh, techniques and, and as far as eliminating emissions out the, out the chimney kind of thing, and making it, uh, EPA?
They didn't really get into, to that, per se, their, I mean, between that and other things on there, some places they're shutting down their incinerators because they can't meet the, uh-
FDA regulations, yeah.
So, the ones that are out there are getting fewer all the time because if, I guess it would be good, but they can never meet the, uh, technologies to, to keep the air clean and, and keep the contamination down.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's one of the, the problems with that. And then they, also your, your anaerobic, uh, digestion of your food waste and stuff like that was something that we could look into in, in the future there. And also pyrolysis, which is converting the plastics and tires and stuff like that from their present condition to oil. So, and there's a new plan opening up in Indiana this year, starting to build, well, the first one in the nation of commercial size, I guess, so that should be interesting to see how, how that turns out. The problem, one of the problems I seen was their estimated price was about 90 million or 20 million, ended up being 260 million, but, uh, but it looked like they're, they're gonna do it. And then my other class was the food waste collection and, and composting of that. Uh, again, something I don't think we're into yet, but hopefully the businesses are doing that on their own to a certain, certain level. But, uh, I got some information on some composting prices, we'll get into later, but, again, it's basically teaching and training the people to do the things and keep the contamination down and keeping at it other than, you know, always an initial push and then it kind of falls to the wayside. Uh, and of course, you got the expense of having the containers and collection and stuff like that on top of it, so it's, you still gotta have some, a system, and there is some cost to that, that you gotta recover. Uh, but they did have one school system that reduced their, their food waste and stuff like that by a great amount, and saved like $81,000 a year just on that one, uh, program there, or one school district. So, that's something that hopefully we'll see more of, and maybe we can get involved in. And that was pretty much both class.
One thing that I forgot to mention was, um, a lot of those classes were really focusing on the zero-waste philosophy, and a lot of people feel like that means that you're making zero waste, and really, um, it was meaning that you're diverting, uh, 90% of the, uh, waste that would go to the landfill from there. So, so they talked a lot about, um, reducing and reusing and, um, you know, composting. There were several streams instead of just having, you know, the one or two, and I thought that that was really interesting because I think that in our rural community, um, I think, and it's coming up later in our agenda, that we really need to have a conversation about reducing, especially in this time, recycling is, um, you know, not, the ability to recycle plastic and things like this is not what it used to be, and when we provide, um, this ease for people to, to recycle the plastic, I feel like, um, and really, we're turning around and we're not able to recycle it, you know, and so we're providing, um, this, this feel-good feeling for people to, um, you know, continue to buy the single-use plastic and stuff like that, and then, um, you know, not considering where it's actually going to go after, and so I think that, um, that needs to be a little bit more of a conversation we're having, so.
One, one other thing, uh, California, they're, we're trying to reduce their organic food waste by 50% by 2020. One thing I thought was kind of, uh, different was by 2025, they want to recover the edible food waste and remake it for human consumption.
I, oh, okay.
So, I think that, that, um, that was really interesting because that had a lot, the classes that I was going to, had a lot to do with this, um, food rescue. And so basically what they were doing was they were reaching out to people that had a big impact, like the, um, the catering businesses and the hotels, and they were being really conscientious about, you know, if you're serving this food, you know, only put your spoon into one because as soon as you put your spoon into this other, that whole dish needs to go into the trash. And so they worked with a local food bank, and they would only use up one pan, and then what wasn't used was left in the heater, and so it was perfectly good food, and the food bank would come, and then they would quick freeze this food, so they had these coolers that they would put it in, and it would bring it down to a safe food safe temperature really fast, but be frozen, and so then these people, the food bank, um, had this food that would have normally been thrown away. And so I think that, I know it's funny to think about, but that's really the food that they're talking about, you know, the, the food that's perfectly good food, but it's been thrown away.
Was, was there, was there any, any classes, uh, that was attempted to eliminate the amount of, of material going to landfills, was there any classes that would help us to, uh, make the public aware that they have got to be a little more concerned about how they handle their, their garbage and their waste products, in other words, get them, get the public more involved? Is that the thing we've been struggling with, just to get people involved and take an interest and a little pride in the community? And I thought this kind of, maybe they'd have some kind of class on, on, uh, how to get the public involved.
Part of that was the education process, obviously, and then the enforcement process, and of course, California's big on the enforcement part of it, doing your, uh, surveys and waste audits and stuff like that to see what, where your waste is coming from and stuff like that, and how it's being processed and stuff. So, and then there was also incentives and then disincentives also, if they don't meet the thing, then they get fined and what have you, so, and that's even down to the household level. So, you got, if you don't meet the standards, you can get fined whether you're a household or a business. So, that's, that was, the same thing we were talking about here, the education thing being the number one thing, and then of course your contamination, uh, well, that's, that's the main things that everybody's having a problem with and have to concentrate on, and education, a lot of resources for those areas, so, same thing we've been-
I'm glad to see that they're thinking a little more, it's like, uh, way back when, when I was in the military and right up till now, uh, waste food used to be able to be served or given to, like hog farmers and, and whatnot, uh, for animal feed, and I don't know how, whether it was politics got involved or what, but they couldn't, they couldn't do that anymore. And it used to be, I could go down here to Bash's and their old produce, I could go in and they'd give me boxes of old produce to feed chickens with, and they can't do that anymore either. Uh, and I don't know why, uh, but I would think that would be a good way to get rid of waste by feeding animals that, that produce other products, so.
And our local food bank does still, uh, get food, and that they can't feed to people, they do feed to, to hogs, so.
They are, they are, yeah, that's, that's good here, that is excellent here, because that's for a while, and, I mean, and if anybody wastes, it's the military, they just throw stuff away like crazy, and, uh, I, I would see, uh, maybe 25 gallons of fresh milk go down the garbage, go down in the sewer, so. Anything else? Any questions for, for Commissioner Ferry and-
Chairman, if you mind, uh, if you don't mind, I have a few things to say. I was able to attend the first two days of it, and then on Wednesday, I actually went to the floor. I, I feel I've had a chance to walk around the exhibit hall, if you will, which was fascinating as well. But, the majority of everything that I went to was recycling, because obviously that's a hot topic for us as well. I was able to see a lot of speakers, and, uh, one that was real impressive was from Advanced Disposal, one of their CEOs that had gone there, and basically, to summarize it, I, I made some, um, made some notes here on my phone, if you will, but basically, just basically saying, recycling's not gonna go away, it's gonna continue, but it's just gonna be a huge cost to continue, so therefore, they're kind of doing that. They're not so worried about it because the majority of those companies, he said, it's their business in recycling is about 20% less, so the majority of their business is in solid waste, so, yes, you're right, I did hear a lot of, you know, that cities trying to do, uh, zero waste or get as close to it as they could, but like this gentleman with Advanced Disposal said, he basically just said, uh, his exact quote was, you know, you gotta give an appropriate return for sustainability. So, he believes there's, you know, a good and a bad, but at the end of the day, when it's a private sector, they, they gotta make money on it to be able to pay, pay their shareholders and stuff like that, so, which was kind of, you know, you know, from our sector, it's just kind of, it was different to hear that, if you will. Uh, but again, one of the big things is contamination, 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 that's what's really killing the business right now, and, you know, they talk a lot about the China situation, you know, and what's going on there. They think what's gonna happen out of that in the next five years is, obviously, it's gonna get better because that's gonna call for more domestic markets to improve, uh, you know, and there's actually rumor now that China is actually purchasing plants in the US, so their plan is to be able to buy it at a contaminated rate, they'll clean it up to be able to send it back home, so, there you go. So, with that said, it's just ongoing, but, you know, uh, it's just gonna be education, education, and, uh, like Chairperson Ferry said, you know, it's just gonna come down to the other diff, you know, the other Rs, you know, reduce and reuse, you know, rather than recycling, so, I just keep hearing that over and over again, I know some of those. From the other places, you know, they said, a lot of these bigger places like Alcoa, and it's cheaper for them to build a product out of a virgin material than it is out of a recycled material. So, and I think we might have had that discussion before, but, you know, they talked about glass again, and, you know, they want pure clean glass, and then when we recycle glass, it goes back in, it's current, now, it's, it's not as clean as, you know, and they want the best product out there, so for me personally, it wouldn't matter, you know, when I'm drinking a soda or drinking whatever, but, but then there's a lot of topics, so, but, you know, we'll just keep beating on it.
Well, it sounds like that Expo was, was- It's a, a really interesting thing, I would have loved to have been able to attend, but unfortunately, uh, health reasons, I couldn't do it, and the last couple of months has been murder. Uh, anything else?
I also, my attendance classes about, I went to a contamination class expected to be about contamination, but it wasn't, it was about how to, uh, to encourage people to, um, wash their recyclables if they are contaminating. I found out that there's, uh, organization that buys a lot of, when, type of brackets and things to publish. There was a lot of educational ideas, like they had contests with, uh, decorating small trash cans, it looked like a regular, one of the big trash cans, but it was gold, they had, um, contests on that. I put some in the packet of some of the, like storyboards that we saw, they were just a foam board, and each one had a topic, and they, like an artist had, um, gone in, um, topic, and I found that was, uh, for us, but I heard that. So, it was really interesting, new products.
That's-
They were adding, they were adding, uh-
You say new products, like-
Products of the smart, part of the team, you know, servers, was, they were demonstrating a lot of that stuff, so, really, that's something, I, I'm a cyber server out there, that's how they sort of, uh, like that.
Years ago, uh, I know the, the Japanese, they were taking waste products and, and, uh, they would compress it with hundreds of tons of pressure to where it would take out every ounce of moisture in it, and they made, like, 36 by 36 by 36 blocks of material, uh, cover it with a, uh, water-resistant, uh, material, and sink it and make water, or make, uh-
Reeds?
What do you wanna call them?
Like coral?
Yeah, yeah, they, they make, they make actual dams in the ocean to keep, keep from, from eroding the coastline, I don't know, there's a name for it that escapes me right now, but, uh, and they would make, use them for all kinds of building products, uh, even Mexico was doing it, old, old hay was no good, it would normally be plowed under, they would do the same with it, and they, they built houses down there with it, and, uh, in most cases, it works out well, there've been a few, few problems with heat, but other than that, it, a way of getting near things, because landfills are not the answer. Being a quasi-geologist, uh, I've got some, some videos, it's, it's basically a college geology 101, and, uh, they go, they get into what happens to, to the landfills, and it's probably one of the worst things in the world for our soil. Uh, even, I mean, there's, there's the benefit of methane gas that's produced by all of the deterior, the decomposition of the, of the material, but they just burn it off, and they don't, they don't reclaim it at all, so, I don't know what the answer is. So, anything else?
I got just one thing to mention, uh, in June, over in Albuquerque, they're having a, uh, market development workshop for developing local markets for the recyclables, you know, the glass, your cardboard and all that stuff to be disposed of locally and, and products made out of local, like grass, the glass making sand and/or, uh, gravel to be used in, in landscaping and stuff like that, but, uh, I thought that would be an interesting, uh, thing for somebody to attend, and it's close by and, and, uh, we need more markets because we're not, we're not doing, doing well with markets in the area, so.
Okay. We belong to, I have a C, uh, Diggit Kingman Community Garden Earth Day Celebration, a report regarding CCC's participation in the Diggit Kingman Community Gardens Earth Day Celebration. Uh, we attended that, we had a, a table set up and, uh, gave away, uh, water bottles, we had some leftover reusable bags, some of them were freezer bags, and we were able to hand those out to people, and, uh, the color books and crayons for the kids that they seem to enjoy, brought our mascot there, scared a few little kids with that, unfortunately. Most of them, most of them got a kick out of it. Uh, and it was a nice turnout, we had, we had a nice day, uh, all the way around, and it, I, I thought it was a, a fun thing to do, and I think we should, we should participate every year in that, it's an easy thing to do. Kathy, you were there, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I thought it was a fun day.
Okay. I'd like to, Sarah?
No, I loved it, it was great.
Okay. Alright, we'll move along, and then the next item is item D, Kingman Arbor Day Celebration Report, the Commission participated in the annual Kingman Arbor Day event, those present will show you an impression of this year's event. I thought it went very well, we planted six almond trees, I think they were?
Pecan?
Pecan, I knew it was one of those nuts, yeah. Uh, six pecan trees, I shouldn't say we, because I didn't participate at all, I couldn't, I couldn't lift a tree if my life depended on it that day. Wind came up a little bit, but, uh, that wasn't bad. Um, the mayor was there and read the proclamation, and, uh, I think everyone thoroughly enjoyed themselves, we had a really good turnout, and it was at the Firefighters Park on Detroit. Uh, and we have a, a little certificate here that, in appreciation, and if you don't mind, I will read this from here, and it says, 2019 Arbor Day Certificate of Appreciation, uh, Clean City Commission, the Clean City Commission of Arizona, partner of the Arbor Day Education Program, Community Celebration, and Tree Planning. Uh, it is with gratitude that Surbat Garden Club acknowledges the continued partnership and support of the Clean City Commission in promoting Arbor Day and the purchase of trees, the beauty, for the beautification of Kingman, a Tree City, a Tree City USA. Let it be known that the Surbat Garden Club recognizes your generous contribution, extends special appreciation for your support, given this day 16th, uh, of May 2019. Thank you very much, they're not here.
I have one comment on that.
Yes.
I'd like to thank Public Works, they did purchase two of the, um, countries.
Yes.
And we did four, so, thank you.
It was Public Works and, and the Parks and Commission, uh, Parks and Rec, they both involved there. Okay. Item four, Old Business, promoting community involvement, discussion of possible action regarding activities, regulate, related to encouraging community involvement in the city's Clean City Commission team-up and, and activities. Um, this is the one thing we've been struggling with as long as I can remember. All we can do is keep going at it.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, um, Donna has included some of the Facebook statistics in the packet, um, you know, she's done a great job with that, uh, Facebook page, keeping it up and promoting our events, and I think we've done a lot of outreach through the events, distributed a lot of information, reached a lot of people out in the community. Um, and here's some of the statistics.
the community, um, and here's some of the statistics from the Facebook page.
What page are you on?
It's-
Oh, keep going, keep way going.
If you click on the agenda item, it has the two.
So, some of the events that the Commission has participated at was the April first Friday and as you discussed on this agenda, the Dig It Earth Day Event, uh, the City of Kingman Management Team Cleanup that we did in front of, uh, Bashes and, and the old Kmart, uh, Arbor Day Celebration, and, uh, we'll be discussing the, the expo a little bit later on in the agenda, but, you know, those are, those are, in my opinion, probably some of the best ways to, to get out there and get information to people. Uh, we have not, uh, had a chance to send out the letter to local civic and indoor school groups to gauge their interest in participation in any of those activities yet, but we will. I can try to answer any questions if you have any, and we're always open for input, um, ways to get the message out there a little in the community.
I think this is good, I like that, we've been participating in more of these events. Um, I know it's on, on the agenda coming up, but I think that, um, the, the, um, the park, Adopt a Block, Adopt a Park, I think that, that's going to be a good way in just continuing to show up for these community events.
The other thing that, uh, helps is it can only be done as a person, so, um, having a person that can join some of the major groups here in town, um, like the buy, sell, trade ones, and share to those groups, because only a person can share, only a person can join a group, so then the, this information, any of our information can then be shared, so we can also, all of us, do that, but joining the different, because there's some groups that are like sixteen thousand members.
Yeah.
So, maybe that's a good way to get the information out there.
Yeah.
And a lot of this information is shared to the other city Facebook pages also.
Yeah. And that's good, the, the Facebook algorithm, um, it, it's hard to, to figure out and, and even if you like a page, you don't always see it in your feed, so I think if we do all, that, have Facebook commit to sharing it to groups, you see notifications at least that this has been shared to this group, so I think it's a good way to kind of ensure that people are actually seeing our posts, so I can volunteer to help with that a little bit too. And it's good content, I love it, I feel like I'm learning a lot all the time, so.
This might be a good time to bring this up, um, Eddie Tapia, Ken Watkins and myself went to a, uh, meeting and to discuss, um, primarily the, uh, recycling, but we got into several different things and, uh, the whole time we were at the meeting, the one thing I noticed that all of these people that were there, the questions that they were asking was, who's responsible for this, uh, who takes care of that, who do we call to come out and pick up this garbage, who do we call to cut the weeds down, uh, why don't we have more code enforcement, uh, it wasn't until the very end of the meeting practically, that one person stood up and asked, how, what can we do to help? And that was Jean Bishop, one of our supervisors, and, um, she asked if it would be okay if anybody joined the Adopt a Block program, uh, if they would be welcome and, and of course, everybody's welcome to the Adopt a Block program, but we've got to educate people that, if, if, if anything is going to get done, they've got to take the initiative to bend over and pick up that piece of plastic or, or maybe pull that weed that's encroaching, uh, into their sidewalk or something, rather than expecting Public Works to come out and do it. Uh, it, it's, it's just, you know, we've just got to keep after them with Facebook, uh, articles in the newspaper, uh, trying to get people to where they take pride in their community.
And create the opportunity where, you know, it's like I have these cleanups and these people showed up and it, it's, it's been amazing, so I think also, you know, creating the opportunity, like creating a program that's, that's up to date, that we, that they can come and they can sign up today for, for Adopt a Block or, you know, and, and just, I think creating the opportunity is our responsibility and then, then people can, you know, rise to the occasion.
Uh, there were good a few times when I confronted someone in, in like Walmart's parking lot, when they just leave the container sitting alongside the car rather than taking and putting the trash, and I've gotten that, that one thing with salutes other times, but you kind of have to, you know, consider the source and, and go from there, but, but, uh, it, it just has to be done. Anybody got anything else?
I thought the meeting was very informative.
It was.
Really interactive, I thought, with, with the other participants that were there.
It, it, it just amazed me though, the, the amount of, of, uh, non-information or misinformation that people have as, as to what they are responsible for, uh, uh, the, the things that they expect the city to do that is right now, uh, labor intensive and expensive and we just don't have the manpower to do it and without the money, uh, these things can't be done. Anything else?
I, I think the, the thing on that is, again, when we clean up something or have, have a activity or something like that, to advertise the results of it afterwards and, you know, we, we have, say, sixteen thousand people in Kingman and it would be nice if every one of them took part in something, even just cleaning up their own area, but it doesn't take sixteen thousand people to make a difference, a group of three or four can make a difference, it may be in a smaller area, but, you know, you, you get three or four here and three or four there and three or four there, overall, it makes a heck of a difference in their, again, it would be easier if everybody just pitched in and did their part, keep their own area clean, it's like, I, I have the same feeling, I walk down my road, especially after trash day and now there's trash and the can was sitting here and now there's trash there and the can's empty and gone, it's their trash, when they pulled the can back, went and just picked up the trash, you know, and it's, it's, it's frustrating to me time after time and it's always the same, same people and, and stuff, but, uh, again, we start picking up and, and then it looks good and, you know, just got to keep plodding along and, and set the example, I guess, and then-
Uh, I, I see it over and over and over, on, on days like today especially, when the wind is really blowing and a, a trash can will get knocked over and, and the trash blows out, uh, it, it, it's, it seems up to the, the operator of the compactor truck, they get out and clean up the area rather than the homeowner coming out and helping and, and that unfortunately is, takes time and time is money. But, uh, there's some things on, it's on, on item C of, of this and we'll talk about some other stuff that, uh, goes along right along with this, I think. Anything else?
I, I have something real quick, so I saw the, um, am I on the right agenda here? Ooh, never mind, never mind, that's why I couldn't find it. All right. I'm ready to move on, sorry for the confusion there. I'm ready, I'm sorry, I couldn't find the agenda item when I was on the wrong agenda.
So, we're ready to move on?
Yeah, let's move on now, sorry.
Okay, that's fine, all right, so, um, item ID B, uh, City of Kingman Expo, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Planning, uh, for the Clean City Commission Table at the City of Kingman Expo.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of this commission, so the Expo, City Services Expo is, uh, scheduled for May thirtieth, that's a Thursday, it'd be from four PM to seven PM, will be located down on Beale Street between Grandview and First, uh, that block will be closed, uh, all the city departments and divisions will be there with their equipment and their information to hand out, um, and we do have a spot for the Clean City Commission, um, we have discussed previously handing out, uh, reusable grocery bags, um, I need to do a count on those, but I, I think there's about a hundred or so of those left.
Okay.
Um, we do have some other, uh, the plastic bags left, which we had about two hundred of those, that we could give out with the, whatever else, I guess, what other goodies were we planning on distributing at that event, we've got some water bottles left, I'm not sure how many off the top of my head.
How are we, do we still have any, any colored books and crayons and things like that for the kids?
I believe we do, yeah, yes.
That would, that would be a good thing to give away, that went well last year, uh, the, the water bottles, uh, reusable bags, uh, I would like to see some, some maybe information on, uh, being able to join the Adopt a Block or, or set up their own, uh, community, I think we have applications on our, in our packet here, that, uh, something like that, that we could distribute to the public, maybe put in the, uh, reusable, uh, grocery bags so they could take it home and, and, uh, read it at home and maybe we could get people interested in, in, uh, setting up their own Adopt a Block program or, or joining in with ours.
And we are approaching the end of our budget year, we could use up the inventory that we have left at this event and then make a purchase in July when the new budget kicks in.
Okay. Donna, do you still have your brochures left?
I do, and I, I-
Well, just bring what you have, I think.
Uh, being that we're going to be talking about, uh, getting involved with, uh, uh, not only the Adopt a Block, but the, uh, the parks and trails, uh, do we have any little maps of, of the trail facilities, the hiking trails here that people would like, maybe if they saw that, they might be able to get involved with, uh, helping clean that out, but that might be worth putting in the packet.
We have stickers left.
Oh, good.
Good. I think any, any literature that we can stuff the bags with, whether they read it or not, I don't know, but, uh, I think it'd be worth putting in, hopefully if, if one out of ten reads it, I would be happy.
I have a question, did, uh, we, and I think it's a good idea that we're substituting going to the grocery stores and giving out the bags for these, I feel like we have more interaction with people face-to-face, we can talk, they're not just in a hurry after, you know, to get home and put dinner on the table, but are we still going to the stores and asking them to match our bags? So I wonder if, I mean, it's advertising for their store, I wonder if they would still be willing to donate?
I don't know, the, we use the fact that, that their logos were on the bags and, and so we would ask them to match or come close to matching when we're giving it away.
We give those away, I mean, everybody wanted those bags at the last and we ran out of bags and we were still giving out, so I wonder if we could maybe even get some other bags?
My feeling, we, we were giving, we were giving away like, like two hundred to two hundred and fifty bags, uh, and getting very little return from it, we never, the people would take them home and they'd never use them again. Um, when we, when we have, when we have the, like, the, the expos, uh, we have a chance to actually talk with them and, and the same with the, with the, uh, County Fair, uh, we have a chance to actually talk with them a little bit and then, whether we get through to them or not, who knows, but at, at least maybe it, it does help a little bit.
Yeah, I think so, it seemed like people had a lot of, you know, good questions and always hear like, oh, I know you guys did this, and I love giving out the water bottles because y'all know that's my pet peeve, but having the water available to give them an ice cold water, you know, and, and some little kids were like, one lady told me, this little girl, oh, she loves water bottles, you know, so I think that's another good thing with that we can give away and we're not making a bunch of, you know, more junk and trash to give to people.
And we are going to have, um, uh, did, what's it called, name from the Dig It, uh, oh gosh, I wiped it on the tip of my titty. Uh, all of a sudden I'm drawing a blank on her name, anyway, uh, she's the lady that, that crochets, takes plastic, runs these plastic bags and crochets them together, uh, and, and makes, uh, pads and, 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 uh, little rug kind of things out of, and she was making pads to give away to homeless veterans so they wouldn't be sleeping on the cold ground and, and it, so she is going to be there, uh, doing a demonstration of how she does this and I think that's going to really be an interesting thing to watch, plus I think she said she'll have something to give away as well, so.
Is there any small map of, like, with the Adopt a Block, is there a map of what streets are already taken, so?
There is, um, there is, but I, I don't know the, I was allowed to distribute it because I'm not sure-
No, 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 not distribute, I'm just thinking in a stand-up so people could see, like, you know, I could pick that street.
There, yeah, I just, on our last month's packet, there was a little map and, uh, it, it's, it's an old kind of outdated one and the people's names that are on that, on some of the sections, no longer take care of those particular areas, so, um, and of course, that's going to be our next, our next item on the agenda, so I thought we'd talk about that then.
Um, back to it, did you say you would bring a table for us?
Yeah, we'll have a table, you know, we'll have the easy, uh, and, uh-
Okay.
Table and tablecloths, uh-
Bring them chairs.
And chairs, yes.
Do we have our new tablecloth?
I would hope so, I had it really first time dealing with that, but they were ordered, they were guaranteed, rather than, uh-
If we want to use more than one table and take that tablecloth that we used at Dig It, it's a big tablecloth and we-
They're going to use it, they're going to be using it.
Oh, they're going, you guys, that's right, more or less, booths will be side by side, I would imagine, with-
Yeah, we'll be close.
Okay. In fact, I talked to, uh, one person, Steve Smith, who's, uh, uh, does banners and whatnot, um, and I think he said, uh, roughly they run two dollars a square foot is what, what the normal charge is for making a, making a banner, so if we needed a banner, uh, Clean City Commission banner to put inside a booth, uh, that's something we can look out to. Uh, not for this week, it would take, it'd take too long, I think, to get it, but, uh, for future, like at the fair and whatnot, we could use it. Anything else, anybody else got any suggestions for booths? Okay. Item C, Adopt a Block.
You want some contaminated garbage, like, like at the first Friday?
Some, some samples of contaminated garbage, uh, wouldn't hurt, I, I don't think people are aware that, that one pizza box can, can contaminate a whole dumpster of garbage.
I know.
Yeah.
What about the Kick But The Kids group that goes and picks up all the, that's like at, at Centennial, I wonder if they would be, do you want me to see if maybe they could come and be at our booth or something, would that be okay?
Um, if they were, yeah, if they wanted to come to our booth, that'd be fine.
Okay.
We don't, we're kind of spaced out as far as the number of-
New spaces, okay, gotcha.
And, um, I have filled event at my house, so I will supply filled event there. And maybe we can get somebody to, to be the person to wear it. Of course, it'll probably turn out to be 110 degrees out there.
Probably if I wear it.
Anything else? Okay, and we move on to item C, Adopt a Block Park Trail Program. Discussion and possible action regarding the Adopt a Block program and the possibility of expanding it to include parks and trails. So, we've kind of covered a little bit of this already.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I have included some draft documents, and they still need a lot of work, but basically we're just taking the Adopt a Block forms and summary information and adding the trail and park information. So, like I say, they, they need some work, but I think it's something we could accommodate pretty easily. Talked to Mr. Mearsman at Parks, and he has no objection. Like, we'll have to add some language in here about, right now, these are set up to go to the Traffic Safety Committee, I don't know if, you know, I don't know what that process would be on the trail and parks, if you want to take those to one, to one of their commissions, or if you would just have a staff group that would review those and approve them, that's kind of what I would lean towards. So it mentions it here, you know, the Parks Superintendent as approving those applications.
And then on trails and stuff that's separate from ones like Crada maintains and the different bike groups, or are these like the same trails?
Well, we got, we've got multiple use pathways, like in Mojave Wash or I-40, these are, you know, they're concrete, paved, multi-use paths, but, you know, they have like Campfield Loop, Castle Rock Trail, those are all trails that the city built. Crada has done some additional work out there since those were built. But, you know, we've contracted with, way back when we were a little bit better financial straits, you know, we used to contract with trail maintenance companies that would come out and do maintenance projects on those trails, and, you know, we haven't been able to fund that for the last few years, so.
Yeah. I'm wondering if the Parks Department could just come up with a little something that maybe had some direction for people, like how to care for the parks a little, maybe in that, could be in that packet? But then maybe with the trails, I know that when you volunteer with Crada, they always have you read this information about like the desert tortoise, because it's a protected species, and I wonder if we could ask if there's anything that we need to have, like, in the packet?
Like, don't pick up rattlesnakes or...
Yeah, yeah, just a little like, don't, you know. This looks good.
And so the other part of it, I guess, we talked a little bit last time about the youth participation, so I still need to approach our risk management people about that and see if that's still all applicable from the, from the last time, as far as having the waivers and the parent signatures, see if that's still something that would be required or not.
Okay. That was my question.
We had a management get-together cleanup that was in front of Bash's and the old Kmart a couple of weeks ago, and city staff and management participated in it, and we had a real good turnout. And I think if we could get more of that kind of action going, maybe various departments in the city, talk with Rotary, Elks, various lodges, to see if maybe they could put committees together and pick a block that they would be willing to clean up once a month or something like that, would be beneficial. Again, the Public Works brought a little tractor and a mower, and I don't know if you've seen the grass in front of Bash's and old Kmart, but it's like almost like a golf course out there, it's mowed down, looks really, really good. So I think, I think that sort of thing is, we can focus on a little bit perhaps. I'd be more than happy to go to places like the Elks Lodge on their night meeting, I'd get on their agenda, and, if I can, if I can talk for five minutes without losing my breath. Anyway, I'd be more than happy to do that sort of thing and see if we can get people interested in, in a little community action here.
Yeah.
So, we'll continue the side I mentioned.
Yes, this will be continued.
We'll have some more work done on those trash by next month.
Okay. Anything else on the Adopt a Block and Trail Program? If not, let's move on to new business, Consideration of Applicant. Lead Clean City Commission applicant Jennifer, and, excuse me if I destroy your name, Boncor, is that it?
What, she, she's on a business trip.
She's on a business trip.
She's expecting to be back in time, but she, I talked to her earlier, she's second class, so she asked that we bring applicants.
Okay, we can, we can do that. Then let's move on to Consideration of Recycling Program Changes. Discussion and possible action regarding possible recycling program changes.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, we've discussed, well, we've discussed this in pretty great detail in the past, but as part of our budget process, there was a lot of discussion with council on the status of the recycling program, so what I'd kind of like to do is just give you the statistics and trends that we're seeing right now, and then at the end, we can talk about maybe some alternatives or, or changes in our implementation. So, again, right now, there's no local material recovery facility. Right now, we're paying, we're paying 75 bucks a ton to recycle cardboard and mixed paper locally, that is local. There is one local vendor who will accept it. That's about 60% of our total recycling stream. Other recyclables, we have one local vendor that accepts metals. Pretty much everything else is going to Las Vegas. So if we just kind of broke down the cost, so for a solid waste, for a trash run out to the landfill, it costs us $135, tipping fee of $35.90 a ton. To run up to Las Vegas, take our mixed plastics to Republic, that trip cost us $581, we're making two or three of those trips a week. Tipping fee, we pay them, is $25 a ton. Glass goes to Strategic Services in Vegas, again, the trip is $581, and those are based upon FEMA equipment rates and our personnel rates. Their revenue varies, averaging, I guess, around $30 a ton. And the battery recycling, it's where we haul our e-waste up there, the trip costs are the same, their revenue is variable, sometimes we receive funds, but there are fees for disposal of old television monitors, so it kind of depends what the mix on that load is. Bulldog Disposal is local, they take the cardboard and paper. When this was prepared, we were paying $65 a ton, now we're paying $75 a ton. KAR is the local that takes our metals, and again, that's, that's variable depending on the commodities market. So, you know, we've made trips up to Vegas, and Mr. Tappy has had discussions with Republic Services up there. Out of there, Murph, up there, they're seeing about 57% contamination of what they're getting. And so, their people are taking those recyclables to them, and they're taking 57%, or 56% of it to the landfill. Contamination on our end, you know, in February, we started accepting only two types of plastic, type one and type two. We're still receiving all types of plastic at our drop locations. Right now, contamination in the drop program, and again, that's the program where we have the cans available at Bash's, at Centennial Park, it's not manned. We've got signs out there trying to instruct people what to do with the materials, where they go, what's not allowed. You know, and it's not proving to be too effective. So right now, contamination in the drop program's at 47%. The other thing with the drop program is that, you know, sanitation department, sanitation fund is funded by City of Kingman residents who pay a trash bill, have, have a trash charge on their water bill. So with the drop program out in the field, we have no control over who utilizes that, and we suspect that there's a significant amount of county residents that are using that, and we're subsidizing that, and they are not contributing to the operation of the sanitation department or the sanitation fund. And this goes back to the whole discussion that we've had when we talked about the sanitation rate study and the fact that, you know, we haven't been able to buy a replacement truck for the fleet in, you know, four out of the last six years, because the fund balance is in such bad shape. This is a contributing factor to that. So for our budget for this year, you know, and again, this was written two weeks ago, I guess, you know, we budgeted $47,500 to cover recycling tipping fees. We spent $37,300 at that time, so, I mean, it's probably safe to assume we're going to exceed our budget for what, because of the rise in tipping fees for recyclables? Right, yeah.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we've requested $75,000 for next year. That's still in the budget right now, but the budget will go to council in June, and, you know, I don't know what will happen with that amount. Another big issue we face is labor for sorting, you know, we have to sort what comes in through the pilot curbside program, we're also sorting from it, because the contamination's so bad, we're also sorting from the, from the drop program. We rely on prisoner inmates to do that sorting. We contract with the prison in Golden Valley, we go out there and pick up inmates every day, and we pay them 50 cents an hour. And, you know, it's a great program, we like, we utilize it all through the Public Works Department and all through the Parks Department. But, you know, we have an incident out there, and whenever they have an incident, they won't send them, so we, we went for, I don't know how long, a month? Yeah. A little over a month, we went without that, without that labor source. So we had money in our budget for temporary labor for other projects that we hire folks out of allied forces or wherever, and so that money all went to pay for the sorting of the recyclables that we were doing with the inmates when we were...
Can you hear a little louder?
Sure. So, you know, again, relying on inmate labor, it's, it's a great program for us, for parks, but it's, it's not, it's not reliable.
Right.
So just a little bit of information on the pilot program, just for a refresher, there are 550 homes in the Wallack Ranch area that we pick up curbside recycling once a week. With the Easy Recycling Program, there are seven drop locations around the city. So considering the budgetary impacts for the tipping fees, for fuel, you know, the loss of the inmate labor program for a certain amount of time, I think it's appropriate that we look at some alternatives, and so we just kind of outlined some, you know, we're working on implementation plans for these. I think we're to the point where we just can't keep doing what we've been doing. And we're spending a lot of money, and a big chunk of that material's going to landfill anyway. And why would we drive it to Las Vegas so that they can landfill it for us? So some of the alternatives we'd like to have would be to discontinue the pilot program, which the commission has supported in the past, but continuing, continue the Easy Recycling Program at one centralized, managed location, and the example would be out of Public Works. So it would be, we would have staff there that when people came in, they would help them with their sorting, and they would turn away contaminated materials. It doesn't address the transportation cost, but at least it takes care of the contamination costs, or contamination issues. We could also look at maybe what we're accepting, you know, we'd be able to, I think we could greatly reduce the contamination that we have in the mixed plastics, because, you know, we could just accept ones and twos or just ones. And maybe that would, maybe we would be able to develop a local market for that, I mean, that's the other thing we could look at, is what we could accept, maybe we'll look at trying to work towards accepting what we can get rid of locally without having to make that trip up to Las Vegas. So there are a lot of options in there, I think we're going to start working through that process. But I think as it stands now, I mean, the other options we talked about earlier, and kind of in the past, we were kind of putting things off until the rate study was complete, but there's been some delays in the rate study. I don't think that's reasonable to put that off until, you know, next December, we're half, we'd be halfway through a budget year again. And the other option would be just to stop doing any recycling, so. I guess as a staff, you know, and in our discussions with the, with the city manager, I think, you know, discontinuing the pilot program, bringing the Easy Recycling Program in-house to Public Works where we can manage it, I think that's a good first step.
So in other words, eliminating all of the different locations around the city with the green barrels, put it all at Public Works?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, one, the one advantage I would see there is you could do like we do at the fairgrounds, and you could, at, at the very least, start collecting data, are you county? You know, and maybe if there's some way that the county could...
And that's the other thing, I mean, we could, you know, we could do a lot of things, I mean, we could say that they had to show a city utility bill with the city address on it. You know, we could establish a fee and charge a fee for county residents. There are a lot of options there, but I think that, that first step, it's a step in the right, the open direction, I think.
We were, we were able to track a little bit of it, that the community cleanups by having them sign a waiver, and the waiver kind of gave us an idea of where they came from, whether it was the county or within the city limits. And I didn't know whether Public Works would require something like that, to have people coming on Public Works property.
Well, I think we would establish a space for them, and again, they would be managed, we would have people there to where we were controlling where they went and what they had access to, but the, the big thing, I think, is just, you know, you'd be able to talk to people and say, well, no, we don't accept this, you know, or know that pizza box is not recyclable.
Is there, is there anything that we are actually breaking even on as far as like glass or aluminum or that sort of thing as far as recycling?
Probably just on the metals. The metals, you know, we get a little bit of return on that, aluminum cans, tin and steel, so that's a small amount of revenue that we are getting, because we can cover the transportation, because that's just our next-door neighbor, if you will, either we take it to KAR or Bulldog Disposal, AKA Kingman Recycling. So we do make it on that, but as far as the glass goes, no, again, you know, it's less than $600 to transport it there, and we're getting $35 a ton on the best clear glass, and then goes all the way down to $20 a ton for green glass.
Yeah. One, one truck broke down, and there goes any profits that you could even think about?
Right, like I said, I think with, you know, because of the bridge weight and what we're allowed to take, we're probably taking about eight tons, so, you know, it's very minimal, you know, it's covering maybe at best not even half of what it's going to cost us in labor to get there in transportation.
And having, having someone help us at the, at the collecting spot at Public Works, that would be considerably cheaper than sorting the... cheaper than sorting the sidewalk pickups that we have now in Wallic Ranch?
Well, again, I think like Mr. Owen said, the best part about this move is, you know, we're not getting rid of the whole program in general, but we're taking more control of it because having those containers out there twenty-four seven unattended, you know, I do believe, you know, I think, you know, I think a couple of you have been out there and seen the contamination we deal with. So now we'll actually be able to have it manned, if you will. So when that person pulls up, we will be able to assist them pulling it out of their vehicle, first couple of weeks, up to a month, you know, we'll be able to, you know, accept what they take, but after that, we'll be able to say, "No, we don't accept this or that," you know. But I think most importantly, it's going to be the education part of it.
Yeah.
Wouldn't have a compactor handy so the trash that is not acceptable could go into the compactor to just go down?
Exactly, yeah. So like I say, the first couple of weeks, we'll have a couple bins there to be able to help them, but, you know, after we think we've educated or we've seen the same vehicle come over and over, you know. So again, it'll be a trial, you know, trial effort, if you will, but I think this is the best way to go with the current market and what's going on.
Do you guys, so I'm thinking that the people that genuinely care about recycling are coming and using our bins, and there's probably a lot of people that are making some mistakes because they don't know, but I think that these people, if they understood like the contamination that we're dealing with, they will be willing to go, you know, so that they knew that it could be recycled instead of going to landfill because of contamination. But then I think there's the people that are using it, really using it as a trash can. And I think that, I think that, I do think that this would be a good move, and I think that it would help people to start understanding what is truly recyclable, even, I mean, for us. Is it a possibility at all to leave just the aluminum cans? Or, I mean, I understand the trips, you know, having one place that'll save us a lot of money, but I'm wondering if, since that's still profitable, if that would be a possibility to leave just the aluminum?
Yeah, I think probably that's where all the contamination would end up then.
Okay, yeah. I was just wondering if that little hole that, I mean, you could stick anything in there, so, yeah. Okay.
Well, aluminum cans have to be cleaned before they're dumped, that's the contamination.
And then lay upon tin cans, you have to take the paper labels off.
Sure.
And wash it out.
Yes.
And that's like even teaching people I've been with, it's like, "No, you gotta take the label off, you gotta fully wash it."
And that was something that we were talking about at this meeting we had, with water being practically gold in the desert, washing cans and whatnot, and especially plastic milk cartons, I mean, when they sit out in the sun for a little while, if they haven't been washed out, you can't get within a quarter of a mile from them, they stink so bad. So water is very precious, and it almost costs more to wash something out than it does to...
Throw it away.
Throw it away.
I have another question about this. It says that sixty percent of the recycling stream is the cardboard and the mixed paper, and this is our most expensive tipping fee, right? Per ton, sixty-five dollars per ton?
Yes.
Would it be a possibility to have Mr. Argo come and speak to us about the current composting program and just explain to us what they're doing with that, and maybe even just start having a conversation about it? Is it even a possibility in our community?
Well, yeah, if you'd like to put that on the agenda, I think I could probably cover that item.
Okay, I mean, I'm just looking at this, this is all compostable stuff, and I know that it's not that easy, you know. You have to deal with, you know, the smiles, and you have to have a lot of aluminum to be able to do that, and it's just not so easy, it's just composting, but I'm wondering if maybe we can have a discussion about it, at least.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
I thought a long time ago, we suggested that we discontinued the pilot. Was it a vote brought to city council and they...
Well, the commission did do that. That was kind of in a transition between city managers.
Okay.
And so the idea back then was that, you know, the previous manager was that we would have this sanitation rate study, and when we took that to the council, that's when we would inform them that we were stopping the pilot program. Well, that rate study hit some obstacles, and it's underway now, so that's how that came about, that we didn't stop it.
Okay.
I think with both of these, with ending that program, and again, I need to confer, I need to verify with the city manager that we're on the same page as far as, you know, these are operational changes and wouldn't necessarily require council approval, but, I need his concurrence, I guess, that we can make those changes without any formal council action. So that would be to end the pilot program and then to bring the easy recycling program in-house at public works.
Can you tell us what, how much it costs to have one of the service persons working, and like how often they have to come just for, just to...
Well...
Probably around thirteen, okay? It's above whatever minimum wage.
Yeah, well, there's, and there's a fee that's added on to cover allied forces' cost and profit, so I just looked at numbers the other day, but I can't think of what it was for the two...
I'm not sure I understood the question.
I'm just wondering, I just want to have an idea of what we have to pay if we don't have the prison labor, and how often these people have to come. Is it like, you know, fifteen dollars an hour, and you have a handful of people?
I love people every day.
Yeah, that's generally, it's around fifteen dollars an hour, and it's, they're working full-time.
Okay, and do they come every day?
Yes, yes. Two to three of them.
I would like to entertain a motion that we discontinue the pilot program, but continue the easy recycle program at a centralized location at public works. I think we would be money ahead right now until something turns around in the market for recycled products. I think that would be a real good idea.
I'm wondering if we could separate, because my question is, would there be a transition period, or would we put some kind of signage, leaving like maybe a bin that's closed with a map that says "Go here" instead?
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of what we've just started working on now, is kind of how do we implement this? And I think, you know, we're looking, you know, just, we haven't come to any final agreements, but I think we're looking probably at a July one start date, and we'd be gearing up our public outreach program to kind of get the word out, and we'd be making new signage for the current drop locations and the new drop locations, so, yeah.
Okay, so that would be my only, that was my only question. To me, you can't just like pick it up and it's gone, and they show up, it's their car, and like, what the heck?
I would like to see if this is possible, a commitment to, we're going to have the education, you know, just being there, and I think if we really let people know about that, but also maybe a commitment to use some of the funding that we're going to save to better our education outreach, whatever that looks like, you know, whether it's a program, you know, the program that you guys are doing with schools, or can we do that where, you know, somehow we make a commitment to put more of this funding towards education?
I mean, we can allocate money throughout the department. I mean, what we're going to get as far as our budget is going to be based upon what the sanitation fund can support. And so, you know, I mean, that's part of our issue, is we don't have limitless resources, so we definitely, you know, we see that that is a priority, we've just got other priorities to juggle too.
Yeah, okay.
I have several comments, I guess. There's still value for the products that we're collecting. The cardboard and stuff, it's going down like most everything else have, and these are national averages. They dropped eleven dollars over a month to fifty-two dollars a ton in March and forty-one dollars a ton in April, where in April of seventeen, they were a hundred and fifty-five dollars. So, but that's for processed material, bills ready to go and basically brought them a major MRF. And again, it's just national averages, so that fluctuates a lot depending on the area. The HDPE is still twenty-one eighty-eight a pound in April. Again, that may have went down, but that's four hundred and thirty-seven dollars a ton, and we're getting nothing because we can't process it. So if we can't afford to buy the equipment to process it, and we're going to continue to collect it and have to pay to get rid of it, and say mixed paper, that's already negative two dollars a ton, so we already have to pay them two dollars a ton just to take it. So, but the sorted, then that stuff is still more valuable, eighteen to twenty-three dollars a ton. So unless we can get some equipment to process it, bail it, sell it by the truckload, I don't see us being anywhere else ten years from now again. So if we're spending twenty thousand dollars a month to the negative now, why don't we not do collect anything for six months, give you a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to buy a conveyor belt, make it easier, people can sort the stuff quicker, better, and then have a sellable product? But unless we have some way to process it yourself, to pay somebody else to process it, you know, right now, say seventy-five dollars a ton for cardboard, that we're having to pay when we could be selling it for fifty dollars a ton? I don't...
Well, I think some of those kind of longer-term recommendations would be what comes out of the sanitation rate study, but, and I get your point, but, you know, that's again assuming there's a local market, and there isn't, you know, there is no MRF here. So instead, we'd be transporting wherever, even if we had a finished product that had some value to it.
I know I researched with the buyer of cardboard and spent over an hour talking to her about cardboard specifically, but again, this thing in New Mexico on June eleventh to, it's the workshop to understand what's required to develop local end markets for collected recyclables, and it will cover the techniques, how to recycle, right, create jobs, improve the quality and quantity of recyclables, and increase efficiency in local programs. Of course, that probably costs a lot of money, but...
If you could forward that information, I don't know if you have an email or something, if you could forward that information to me.
Again, I think, like I say, we've been doing this ten-plus years, and we're still at square one as far as I can see, and I'm all about recycling, so I definitely don't want to stop recycling it. But if that's what it takes to get the money of, if we can spend the money, we could surely save it, so I know there's much more into that, but it just seems like we're spinning our wheels.
Well, I kind of think that's why, you know, again, in my mind anyway, you know, this is kind of a logical first step to kind of cushion the blow to the budgets a little bit and allow us some breathing space until the rate study comes in, where we'll be looking at, you know, all kinds of issues, you know, everything through solid waste and recycling.
Does Bulldog accept all of these if you go to their, I haven't been there in a long time since you guys have had your easy recycling bins, but do they accept all these things from the community if we went to them?
Well, the cardboard and the mixed paper, I'm not sure with us they accept.
Yeah, he's not accepting any plastics, he's not accepting any glass, so he would take all the metals. And then obviously cardboard is really interested, he's not interested in the paper. I wish he was here today so he could talk on it, but we had that conversation at Republican Forum, you know, he had a lot of great information that he could share, and just even him as a business owner in the recycling business, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Russell, but it almost sounds like he was trying to get away from that recycling because it's just, there's not profit in it. There's just, you know. So I know what you're trying to say, Mr. Holland, because again, you know, we're paying him to process it for us at sixty-five dollars a ton, but his exact words to us at that particular set, he's still struggling to get rid of it. So, I mean, I don't know, I think labor is a big thing, and, you know, being rural areas, the other, is what really hurts us, so I don't know. Wish I had the answers, but I think for the first seven years, we were doing good, you know, everything was just kind of just, it was even keel, if you will, and I know, you know, there's a lot of room for improvement, but this last couple of years has just been killing us, and, you know.
Yeah, I think when we do things like the recycling and stuff, the thing to do would have been to figure out the market and how we was going to maximize our return within that market, instead of, "Don't get me wrong, because I'm offering..." Well, let's do something, even if it's wrong, because we can always adjust from there and do something. I get that, you know, it's like fire for a fact, you know, but I think we would just be money ahead if we had an idea of what we was going to do with the material before we collected it.
And I think a lot of this, you know, the whole, the bigger picture recycling market correction that's going on is because it got off track early, that there was a little push to make it easy for everybody, you know, single stream, and you can just throw all your stuff together, and, you know, that, you know, building those kind of habits is essentially what wrecked the commodities market because of contamination. It was too easy.
A lot of places are going back to dual stream or multi-stream even, because again, the single stream just made more contamination and stuff, so some are going to that, but seem like more are going away from that again.
It's like those good intention, you know, these are good intention people that are going to be sending it.
Make it easy and...
But, you know, it's not, you know, it just created a problem.
I just want to see more of this conversation with the public, where we can, where they understand, like, this is why we're not accepting the plastics, you know, and this is why you get the reusable water bottles, and this is why, and that's what I mean about the education, you know, you pull back, but then you, you know...
Yeah, and I think, you know, with having a managed location, our team will have that interaction with folks when they come out.
And having the signage and the posters and the, you know, and maybe volunteer, maybe we could find volunteers that can be there, that can talk to people about all of those things, you know. And they keep Arizona beautiful, they talked about the sustainability, and I'm always having, maybe one day I'll get my stuff together and, you know, volunteer to do that, but...
We could also, as part of the, I was just thinking, give maybe some kind of bumper sticker or something that goes, some kind of way of denoting the people who are recycling and see what our numbers are, so that's like, okay, next time, bring a friend, you know, share the information, bring a friend, so that we can see what in our population do with recycling, you know, what's...
Yeah.
That's part of our education, but having that one location where you can manage it, then we learn.
Yeah, I think the centralized location gives us all kinds of new avenues for public outreach and education.
Yeah, and like... Yeah, and like in Sedona, they charge for certain things that you recycle. So there's a bucket, and you drop your batteries in, and it's, you put your dollar in the bucket next to it, you know?
Well, it's like if you buy your tires, have to pay for stuff in your tires, even though, even though...
Mm-hmm.
Is there, have we ever considered, has anyone ever talked to these pass gates and seen they buy any, now they recycle their own waste, and they buy them?
Um, I haven't personally. I don't, I don't know how their process works. I don't know if they're processing that at the, here or...
All that I've seen is they, they have a baler, yeah, well, they have a baler, like, like a lot of grocery stores have it back, where it's a baler for cardboard, the smashes that bail that, that's one separate thing. There's another baler, if all the napkin and foot towels, it's a separate thing. But maybe mine be part, part of it. I don't know when they ship it, if they end up processing it somewhere, should it be up to one of their other facilities, some paper?
It probably goes to MRF someplace.
And they reuse it at one, so what I've heard is that they end up like the waste from one facility gets processed, turned into paper, and it's shipped to a different facility to become the starter product. So there might be a MRF somewhere in between.
Yeah.
We can reach out to them.
Even that's getting to be tougher, finding a place to store things like paper. If they set outside, you know, I would say at least twice a year, you'll see some, someplace on fire. Either, well, we've had it right here in Kingman, a couple of times a year. There's one down in, in the Phoenix area that you'll see catches fire, a lightning strike or just, just spontaneous combustion, that heat builds up and that stuff. The compactors, that was a business that I was in, material handling, and, uh, a compactor, the initial cost isn't nearly what the maintenance cost is on the things. Over a period of time, the maintenance cost on compactors is outrageous. Uh, the ones like the grocery stores have, when I was in the business, which was many years ago, even then, it would be anywhere from $250 to $300 a month to keep that thing going, uh, just by, just because of the, uh, planned maintenance that you'd come out and lubricate the thing and check it to make sure that pins on hydraulic rams weren't wearing out and getting ready to break, and, and, uh, they, the rams are so strong, they actually stretch the material to where they have to be cut and shortened and welded back together again. They are very, very expensive to operate.
So, I second.
I haven't had a motion made.
Yes, you did.
I suggested, I entertained a motion.
Oh, okay.
No.
Um, are you looking for a motion?
Yeah, yes.
About ending the pilot program and centralize, so, I made a motion, end the pilot program and centralize the easy recycle program, the overlap period of that public, we have to pay the best.
Motion been made and seconded? Motion been made and seconded? Any, any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say, say no. Motion carried. Thank you. Hmm, I must be missing a page. No, I'm not. I'm just in the wrong section here. Okay.
Would this be, um, sent out to people in your weather bills, or how are you going to let people know initially?
Um, we'll probably do a lot on Facebook. Over the next week or so, we'll try to finalize the implementation plan.
Do you think there might be a video talking about why this is?
Yeah, I think we definitely will. I don't know what the timing will be on there because the public outreach coordinator, you know, has a lot on her plate.
Oh, yeah, sure. Okay.
Well, I would think the easiest time would be if it falls around the process and company.
Any notification in the newspaper wouldn't hurt either. Item number six, announcements by commission members, limited to announcements, availability, attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings. Commissioner Hollis?
Uh, I have nothing.
What? I don't understand what he said.
He said he has nothing.
Commissioner Ferri?
I also have nothing. It's my house.
Um, this announcement, every full moon, everyone take that set of three to the left? Set of three heads? Praying for peace, because part of peace is having everything clean, healthy and good for all.
Sounds good. Bishop Bubbin?
I will not be attending.
Okay. Would you be here for the expo?
Yes.
Good.
Yes, I just have to go in the way.
Um, I think we've pretty much covered the, the meeting at the Republican, uh, meeting that we had here in town. The one thing I would like to see on next month's agenda, we have not appointed a vice chair. Since Commissioner Wayne left, we have been without a vice chair, and, uh, in fact, I would just kind of carry over last year's view chairman of wasn't really appointed, or just sort of did it. So, I, I think perhaps we ought to, we ought to look into having a vice chair in case something happens that I can't attend the meeting. That's all I have. I have entertained a motion to adjourn.
I second that. Sorry, I'm tired. A motion to adjourn.
Motion, seconded, and all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any state nay? Motion carried, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.